Good evening, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is Marion City Council Meeting for Thursday, May 22. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen.
Here.
Mr. Harper.
Here.
Mr. Miskman.
Here.
Mayor Abu Asli.
Present.
Ms. Spencer.
Here.
Mr. Brandt.
Here.
Mr. Sterned.
Here.
Thank you. We now have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. First on the agenda are two proclamations, one for Public Works Week, which I will come down front and present, and then I've asked the mayor Pro Tem to present the second one, which is for Mental Health Awareness Month. On behalf of the council in our city, I will be coming down right now, and then Mike Barlow will accept the proclamation. Okay, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people in Marion. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for building, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our residents, and whereas it is in the public interest for the residents, civic leaders, and children in Marion to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest in understanding the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore, I Nicholas Abu Asli, Mayor of the City of Marion, do hereby designate the week of May 18 through 24, 2025, as National Public Works Week. I urge all residents to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life for all people.
The next proclamation is for Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas May is known as Mental Health Awareness Month, and Foundation Two Crisis Services and the Lynn County Mental Health Access Center encourage the prominent visibility of mental health concerns and services in our community to de-stigmatize the conversation and connect people with appropriate support services. And whereas one in five American adults experiences a mental health condition each year, and everyone faces challenges in life that can impact their mental health. And whereas despite its prevalence, mental health remains shrouded in stigma, preventing many from seeking support. And whereas early intervention and access to quality care are crucial for managing mental health conditions and improving quality of life. And whereas we encourage all residents to take the time to understand the importance of mental health education and recognize taking care of ourselves and others, including taking care of mental health. Now therefore, I, Gage Miskman, on behalf of Nicholas Abu Asli, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month, and urge our residents and agencies to recognize the importance of mental health education, advocacy, and support.
Thank you. My name is Jenna Shaughnessy. I'm with Foundation Two Crisis Services. And I'm also a Marion resident. Thank you for taking the opportunity and the time to proclaim May as Mental Health Awareness Month. We continue to see our numbers increase across Iowa, including here in our community. We now respond about 12,000 times a month. So 12,000 times, people are reaching out in crisis needing help, including families that live in Marion. You know, there's stories that we hear every day, people in crisis, people having thoughts of suicide, mental health concerns, and it's very important that we continue to be there to make safe communities, safe workplaces, and safe families. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all your work. And Mayor Pro Tem has a few comments he wants to make.
Yeah, because up on the screen, we have the design for the 988 decals for some of the city vehicles we're doing. So I just had a few words I wanted to say again on that and just Mental Health Awareness Month in general. Again, I just want to thank everyone for the work on the 988 vehicle decals. Once we know the cost, we should be able to apply for the HopeWalk grant, meaning this would be a small but meaningful initiative at zero to minimal cost to taxpayers. I find these kinds of small, visible actions important for a couple of reasons. First, they help normalize the conversations we need to be having about mental health. Second, it's local communities and our hardworking nonprofits that make the most real impact in this space. Because here's the reality. Iowa is one of the worst-ranked states in the country for mental health treatment. We rank 47th in the number of psychiatrists. We rank 44th in overall mental health workforce availability. We rank 51st, yes, 51st, in the number of psychiatric beds per resident. We have just two state beds for every 100,000 Iowans. The national average is 12. Nationwide, as said in the proclamation, one in five adults experiences mental illness each year. In Iowa, that's about 473,000 people, roughly the population of 11 Marionians, and I include myself in that number. Each one of us has been or knows someone who has been impacted by mental illness. As for the importance of the 988 decal specifically, someone in the U.S. dies by suicide every 11 minutes. Here in Iowa, we lose hundreds of lives each year to suicide. And the suicide rate outpaces the homicide rate. Yet, as a state and a nation, we invest four more dollars into preventing homicides. We need to recognize that improving mental health resources can also reduce violence, because people with serious mental illness are actually more likely to be victims of violent crime, not perpetrators. And young people today are growing up in a world that feels heavier, faster, and more isolating than generations before. Loneliness and disconnection are reaching epidemic levels for people of all backgrounds. But, but, that is why I keep coming back to the power of local community. We are the ones who can build spaces where people feel welcome, where they feel connected, where they feel seen. And I'm proud of the work that Marion and our residents are doing to create that kind of city. One where people want to show up, gather, and connect in local businesses, at events, and in civic life. Because the more connected we feel, the more hopeful we become. And the more hopeful we are, the more likely we are to ask for help. And I know that mental health is a heavy topic, but this is why I believe we must all carry it together. Thanks.
Thank you, Gage. Okay, the next item is a presentation from the Lynn County Mental Health Access Center and Foundation Two Crisis Services. Welcome. Please introduce yourself and.
My name is Erin Foster. I am the Lynn County Mental Health Access Center Director. Unfortunately, the Foundation Two Law Enforcement Liaison couldn't be with us tonight, so Phil Fort from Marion will come. We'll kind of be adding to the conversation about just the collaboration and different pieces. Again, to echo what Jenna said, proclamations may not seem like a really big deal. You probably read a lot of them. We understand that. Much as Gage's point too, the more you talk about mental health and make it more familiar, the more apt people are to get help. Stigma is still the number one reason people don't seek help. And so the more comfortable we all are with the conversation, it's just going to be so much better for the community. So I just wanted to say that before we started. So, do I control this? Is the question.
Rachel?
I got it. I got it. All right. So I want to thank you guys again for inviting us to give an update on the Access Center. Last year was the first year, I believe, I came in front of you and talked us about Access Center services. And then at the end, we pulled some really specific Marion data, and I will do the same this year. So just general information for those who don't know, the Access Center is located on the northwest side of Cedar Rapids. We are nestled in between Roosevelt Middle School and Abbey Community Mental Health Center. Northwest side is a very active neighborhood in Cedar Rapids, but a very collaborative neighborhood. For many people in the Cedar Rapids area, it is home to a lot of social services that people use every day. Not only is the Access Center there, we partner with Salvation Army. Olivet, which has transitioned to the Northwest Research Center, is also in the area. And so it really is a hub for people in Cedar Rapids and in Lynn County in general to receive a lot of services. Our hours are pretty easy to remember. We never close. So we're open 24/7/365. Anyone who knows anything about the mental health world, it is not a Monday through Friday, 8 to 5 service, and so we need it to be available when everyone needed us. The reason I put our phone number on there is it's a really important number to know because it actually reaches a Foundation Two Crisis Counselor directly. So it's not a secretary or administrative assistant who answers our phone. Foundation Two is one of our strong partners within the Access Center, and so you will reach actually a Foundation Two staff member if you were to call that number. There's a lot of words on this slide that I won't cover, but we just want to really look at what the actual overall mission of the Access Center is, and that is to provide 24/7 high-quality crisis care. There's a lot of moving pieces that go into the Access Center, but all of them really surround these key areas. We are extremely focused on best practices. Best practices and behavioral health change all the time, and it's up to us to keep up to speed on that to make sure that we know. We provide comprehensive, holistic, and recovery-oriented systems of care, which are completely patient-centered and patient-led. The Access Center is 100% voluntary for those who want to seek services. So we don't work with individuals that are on committals. We don't work with individuals that are being told to be there. If they don't want the services, that's really not the clientele that we work with, which leads us to better choices and more options for people if it's driven by what they want. We are for urgent and crisis situations, so we are very early on in the treatment continuum, and we do not function like we do and be as effective as we are without collaboration from a whole lot of community key stakeholders. So this graph has actually changed a little bit since the last time I was in front of you, where it explains the Access Center is actually a Lynn County program. I am a Lynn County employee, but I'm actually the only Lynn County employee at the Access Center. When access centers were mandated several years ago by the state, and Lynn County decided that they were going to take this on as a service, they slipped access centers under Lynn County Community Services, decided that we would be the managing entity. We would provide the building and the facilities and work with the state to get designated and that type of thing, but what they didn't want to do was go poach good staff from other organizations that were already doing really good work. And so Lynn County decided to create a structure in which Lynn County is the managing entity, but we actually contract with the three nonprofits that are there in front of you. So I already mentioned Foundation Two. They provide the crisis counseling services for us. Abbey Community Mental Health Center, which is physically loaded next to us, have staff embedded at the Access Center that work with both the inpatient level of care, as well as some outpatient services, and then Area Ambulance actually provides our sobering unit services. Everyone wants to know who can't be served at the Access Center, so it really falls under three categories. We work with adults only. The adult mental health system in the state of Iowa is very different than the children's mental health system. Do I believe these services should be available for children? Absolutely. The children's mental health system is just a little behind in the state, and these services don't exist for them. Individuals who are in need of immediate medical care do actually need to seek medical care at a other location, usually in urgent care or hospital. Although we have EMTs and nurses on site, their role is more the behavioral health side of things. Finally, this third point is the one that makes access centers clear as mud about who we can't take. So with the Access Center being completely voluntary, and people who want to seek services are the ones that come in, individuals who are violent, or who arrive escalated, or just in general can't be de-escalated, really aren't good candidates for the Access Center. Our kind of rule of thumb is everybody needs to coexist, from staff to visitors to patients. We all need to work together to kind of create a calm environment. This third bullet point is probably the one that comes into play the least. We really have not seen in four and a half years situations in which people do become violent, or people do become escalated. I think to Gage's point, actually, people who suffer from mental illness are more apt to be the victims of these things and not the ones doing it, which is a completely different way of people think about those. But those are technically the three categories of people we can't serve. So just a general snapshot of numbers of individuals who are coming in to seek services. Walk-ins are just as it sounds, those individuals who literally just walk into our front doors. Quarter three notoriously is actually our slowest quarter that we see. We will definitely ramp up as the weather gets warmer and the spring comes. Law enforcement referrals are just as it sounds. It's when law enforcement bring individuals to us, and then same with EMS referrals. Again, quarter three notoriously a slower quarter for us. We've already seen kind of our spring numbers ramp up. Although the Lynn County Access Center obviously resides in Lynn County and is considered a regional access center, we do not turn people away depending on where they're from. And so this map just indicates the number of counties that have actually been representative as patients of the Access Center. We're also up to five different states that individuals have come from to receive services. There's a lot of barriers that people have to receive services. Sometimes they don't want to seek help where they live for stigma reasons. Sometimes the capacity to have resources be in your area don't exist, and so people will travel to receive services, and we have seen that in the four and a half years we've been open. So we will get specifically into some Marion numbers here, and it occurred to me that there's one piece of information, I think maybe in the next slide, that actually there's some data missing, but I'll get to that. So the referral sources coming in, the bulk of the individuals that we have seen from Marion have brought themselves to the Access Center, so they have walked in. This is actually the piece that I was referencing that has a little bit of data missing. Marion is fortunate enough to have a law enforcement liaison embedded into their department. Those numbers are not depicted in here because it's a completely different set of data that Rochelle keeps that's not in there. A lot of times, it's what the police department kind of defaults to, is to have Rochelle bring people in. There's a really good benefit of having Foundation Two be your liaison embedded into the department, and it's for us, they can bypass the triage piece of it. Rochelle has done all of the assessments and all of the work on the front end, so when people need services at the Access Center, she can just come in and place them into those services. So her numbers are not in here. The other piece of numbers, and this is what occurred to me this morning that aren't in here, is there actually was a legislative change that occurred last session that allowed EMS agencies to bill in order to bring people to the Access Center. What was happening is on scene, law enforcement and EMS were having the conversation as to who should bring someone to the Access Center. Law enforcement was doing a lot of that heavy lift of driving someone to the Access Center, when in all honesty, it could have been Area Ambulance that potentially would have been the better fit. But they couldn't bill to do so. The ambulances could only bill to go to the emergency room. So we spent time the last two years when legislation had been in session to actually get that changed. And so July 1st is the first year that actually EMS agencies are able to bill to come to a designated access center. So what's not depicted on here is Area Ambulance numbers of bringing people to the Access Center when they have responded in Marion, which there are some of those. So I could provide that information if you'd like it. Presenting issue, the bulk of it, and this is true for all access centers, we still do heavily see more people struggling with mental health than we do with substance use. I think with a name like the Lynn County Mental Health Access Center, some people forget that we actually do have some substance use treatment options there for people, but for the most part, individuals are coming in to discuss their mental health. Just some demographic breakdowns. These are pretty normal compared to the rest of the population that comes in. We're pretty split, male females coming in, and then that 36 to 45 age range is where we see the most coming into the Access Center with overall data. So your Marion data seems on track with that, too. So the law enforcement referrals. One of the things that we really, really wanted to make sure we were effective and efficient on is when law enforcement is involved with individuals. We probably amended the law enforcement protocol, I think around like option seven at this point, because we wanted to make sure that they knew that it was going to be a really good choice to bring people to us. We knew we were fighting history. At most people, or most times, law enforcement were involved with mental health or substance use calls. They were either taking people to the emergency room or to jail, and so we knew we kind of had to have a better option in that. So on the efficient side of things, if the law enforcement follows the protocol, say that, the law enforcement personnel are actually only in the Access Center on average four minutes. It is a very easy protocol. There's a warm handoff that happens, and then they are back out on the streets. This was very, very important to cops, that they were not going to spend a lot of time like they do when they're in the hospital, or like they do when they have to go to jail, to kind of do the transition of services. So I joke with them all the time, I don't think I can get it faster than four minutes, so that's just where we're going to stay with it. The other piece that comes into play with law enforcement and EMS referrals, access centers around the country are known to be very good programs that divert people away from jail and divert people away from the ERs that don't need to be there. On average, around 43% of the individuals that come in with law enforcement would have gone to jail, and about 20% of them would have gone to the hospital. So just as we see nationally, the numbers are saying the same story for us in Lynn County. So keys to success for us this year, and looking forward, the EMS transportation law was a really big win for us. I joke to say it only took us two years to do, but if you've worked state law, two years is okay. We will take two years. It has really led to not only EMS agencies being willing to bring people to the Access Center, but it has greatly increased the opportunities to train EMS partners that we haven't had before, to even talk about the Access Center and what that looks like for their communities. One of the pieces that is kind of dangling in front of us right now is the state of Iowa's behavioral realignment. Again, last year during session, they decided that they were going to take the entire behavioral health system at the state of Iowa and redo it. And this will go into effect July 1st. For those of us who work in the system, it is May 22nd. We're getting a little nervous because we don't have a lot of answers to a lot of different things. The rates just came out yesterday. They, they, we have some questions about them and contracts, and all these things that put this system into place are not completed yet. And so being only six weeks away from July 1st, we're a little nervous about this. We keep telling people at the Access Center, our main goal is to make sure that everyone who walks into the Access Center doesn't feel our nerves. We will take care of things on the back end. But we're really trying to figure some things out. We have been notified by the state that those that consider to be safety net organizations will have a contract first. We would fit into that. But, well, fingers crossed for things going well with that. The other big piece that we're working on is a widespread marketing campaign. With the behavioral health alignment, what you would know as to be the East Central Region, which Lynn County has sat in for the last 13 years, I believe, has now changed to districts. For us, we go from a nine-county region to a 14-county district with five or six counties never accessing services in our area before, so we needed to make sure that counties such as Lowiza and Scott, and ones that have probably never heard about us before, know about our services and know they're available to them. Community-based withdrawal management program has probably been the thing that's been in the news the most. Outside of people utilizing withdrawal management or detox, as it's usually called, outside of hospitals, there's really only seven other detox licenses across the states, and every one of them is tied to a substance use agency. So someone would go to detox and then go into treatment. We are opening up the first community-based withdrawal management program. Individuals can come to the Access Center. They can work through the withdrawal management program, and then if they want to go to treatment, if that's their next step, we'll help them do that. The Access Center really has a harm reduction approach to everything that we do, and so we wanted the substance use side of things to match that. And then obviously, ongoing community partnerships, as I mentioned in, I think, the third slide. We do not function as successfully as we do without our partnerships. Obviously, law enforcement is a really big one, so this is where I get to throw it to Phil.
Thank you.
So I've been involved with the Access Center since 2017, when it was first being on paper. I got put on that committee, and I stayed on the board until June of the last year, but I've been on the law enforcement board for the Access Center the whole time. And I will tell you that the numbers you saw there, the four-minute thing for us is phenomenal, because we would have the option to take someone to the hospital, and we'd be there for two to four hours. And then we leave the hospital, and then we see them immediately again sometimes. And we'd go to a call, it'd be fire, area, and us, and the only option sometimes was take them to jail. And that's, we, it doesn't work. So this has been a great program for the city of Marion and for Lynn County, in my opinion. So if you have questions for the law enforcement side, I'm a huge advocate for this. I've seen it work. I've been in all the meetings for a long time. A lot of, a lot of fights, and a lot of good, good things come out of it. I'm going to think you were around when this first started, so. I got off the board of just the Access Center Committee, just because I have other things going on, but I did say on the law enforcement side, so we from Marion at least have somebody involved. So any questions for the law enforcement side, I'm always available.
Okay, we'll take questions. Anybody has any? Go ahead.
Yeah, just, just curious, how many access centers? I got two, two questions I think are kind of related, perhaps. So how many access centers are there throughout the state? And then going back to Gage's comment where he said the state of Iowa has only two beds per 100,000. The nationwide average is 12 per 100,000. So, I mean, is, are those interrelated? Not enough state funding, or what is, what's driving Iowa so low? Why, what's happening? How do we change it?
Okay, your first question's easy. There's seven access.
Only seven?
There's seven, and actually, two of us are only 30 miles apart. There's one in Iowa City, which we work with daily. We are ranked 51st in the nation for inpatient beds. Inpatient beds are tied to facilities, they're tied to staffing, they're tied to licensing, and they're tied to funding. The behavioral health realignment is attempting to focus on all of those things. As I can say, the rates that we got that were questionable, not really going to help the funding side of things. Many states do things very differently than the state of Iowa. The state of Iowa, both on the mental health side and the substance use side, is not known to be very progressive. We do a lot of the same things that we know aren't working over and over again. And so it really is going to take a completely different approach to how do we bring people in that can do mental health assessments in order to get people into inpatient beds? What are we doing about workforce in order to open more facilities or staff the facilities? There's multiple facilities in the state of Iowa that aren't even up to capacity because they don't have the staffing. Staffing's tied to funding. If you cannot pay people, if individuals make more at the Casey's down the street from the Access Center than what they do at the Access Center, that's a problem for that. So this is a very multifaceted answer to a very, very problem in the state. And so I, I don't know unless really big changes come, how do we fix those things? Now, they're looking at a couple of different ways to help with, you know, keeping psychiatrists in Iowa and helping with workforce shortages and that type of thing, but it ultimately does all fall on the funding side of things, and we're just not keeping up with that.
Well, if we're dead last, it seems like it ought to be fairly easy to identify a lot of best practices that other states are doing.
They do.
That you can pass on to our legislatures and try to get something going. But my son-in-law is in this arena. And so I understand, he's been telling me for years about the shortage of the professionals in this arena, and he deals with it all the time, and so.
The ideas are there, the best practices are there. I'll throw in making sure they happen is lacking.
Thank you. So you you serve people in a crisis.
We do.
Situation only.
Yes.
And only adults?
Correct.
Not children?
Correct.
Okay, so I mean, that's a very small subset of
Absolutely.
the true crisis with mental health that we have out there.
And one of the concerns we have with, with starting the contracts with the safety net programs, as they call it, which is great. I'll take a contract at this point. We have individuals for three to five days, and then if they need a bed, if they need ongoing counseling, if that system's not in place, we're not making substantial changes in three to five days. We have to be able to send them and to get them going to other things. So that is our fear with this, just starting with us, too.
Where are children being served? I mean, what, what?
So the, so. Are a little bit different. There are pieces of the Access Center that actually exist in Lynn County, so our crisis stabilization unit is what we're kind of known for as our beds. There actually is a children's crisis stabilization unit in Cedar Rapids. Tanner runs it. Iowa City has one as well. So like, there's chunks of services, but not the whole realm of it.
Well, this has been very informative. Thank you so much for coming in. Appreciate all the work you do. Okay. Next item is a public forum, which is a time that is set aside. Next item is a public forum, which is a time that is set aside for comments from members of the public on any topic that is on the agenda but not part of a public hearing. Any comments that are related to a public hearing will be taken during that public hearing. And then there are, there is another public comment section at the end of the meeting for all other comments. Before we proceed, I would like to review the rules of procedure for public comment periods. Everyone is asked to please fill out the yellow card at the, at the end of the table and, and hand it to the city clerk before you speak. Please do not approach the dais where the council's sitting. If you have handouts, please submit those to the city clerk for distribution to the council. Please step up to the podium and speak into the microphone as the meetings are recorded. If you're representing a group, you're encouraged to state the name of the group affiliation. In order to preserve meeting decorum, please address the council as mayor and members of council. All persons wishing to speak will be provided a maximum of five minutes to make their comments. Please do not engage in conduct or speech that is imminently threatening to any person, which incites violence or which is obscene. Please do not disparage any individuals, but keep the comments to the topic at hand. Please avoid repeating comments or points that have been previously shared. Please do not engage in conduct that disrupts the orderly progress of the meeting or engage in speech or conduct that interferes with others' ability to participate in the meeting. Failure to adhere to these guidelines or engage in any disruptive speech or behavior will, after a warning, result in removal from the meeting. Thank you for adhering to these guidelines. And we'll ask anyone who has comments to make regarding anything on the agenda but not part of a public hearing. Please come forward. Welcome.
My name is Erica Bernard. I'm a Marion resident and to the mayor and Marion city council, I'd like to sincerely thank you for your recent proclamation recognizing the importance of mental health. I am a family member of a young man that committed suicide not too long ago. So taking time to publicly, publicly acknowledge this is a critical issue and it sends such a powerful message to everyone that mental health matters and deserves our collective attention. As a nurse, I work very closely with individuals experiencing mental health crises every day. And I see firsthand the toll that delayed treatment, stigma and lack of understanding can take. Mental health is not a taboo subject. It's an essential aspect of overall well-being. And it affects how we think, how we feel and how we act. And it, it just overall determines how we handle stress, relate to others and make good choices. When mental health suffers, every part of a person's life can be impacted. So proclamations such as this are a very important first step. They help raise awareness and affirm that mental health is a priority. But awareness must be followed by action. So I urge the council and the mayor to continue to shine a spotlight on this issue because it means so much to me and others. And keep identifying long-term and meaningful strategies to support mental health services in Marion. We must ensure that those in need of timely access to care, that providers are supported and that education around mental health awareness is integrated throughout Marion and just becomes a part of our culture. This can include creating a task force that supports funding to local mental health programs, expanding access to these crisis intervention centers, promoting training in mental health first aid for city staff and residents, and creating safe spaces for community dialogue around mental health concerns. When cities invest in mental health, we all benefit. Healthy minds build stronger communities. And by prioritizing mental health, we're not only addressing healthcare, we're also affirming that dignity and the worth of every member of our city. So please continue to stand as champions for mental health. Your leadership on this issue is vital. As a healthcare provider and a resident of Marion, I stand with you in support of all the policies that can reflect compassion, inclusion and action. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else to address council on any topic that is on the agenda but not part of a public hearing?
Welcome. Hello, thank you. My name is Anna Clymer and do I need my address? Twenty-four seventy-five.
Recommended, okay.
Resident for over twenty-one years. I want to take a moment to thank Erin with the Lynn County Mental Health Access Center, Foundation Two, Jenna, Officer Phil and the city council, especially Gage, for highlighting the importance of mental health. I wanted to share a community perspective on the journey we have seen as community members. Five years ago, as our community, including the Marion Alliance members, cried out for justice and reimagining of public safety, one thing became clear. Addressing mental health was not optional, it was a demand. Mar encouraged the city and city equity task, task force to apply best practices to police response when potential mental health needs or crises arose in the calls coming in. Luckily, the city and police chief had already started pursuing and addressing the need for mental health professionals working alongside our police department, leading to the creation and support of the Foundation Two Mental Health Liaison role. Today, we want to express our continued support for the Foundation Two Liaison Initiative and gratitude to the city and the county leaders who have helped sustain it. This partnership is a vital response to the real needs of our neighbors, especially those in crisis, and it represents a more compassionate and effective approach to public safety. It's not perfect, but it's progress and we must continue to nurture it. And as we look around today, we must also be honest about the challenges ahead. We are seeing cuts to mental health funding, both the local, state and federal levels. Cuts that disproportionately impact our most vulnerable community members. Those are not just numbers on a budget line. These are people's lives, families, students, children, employees, elders, our friends and our neighbors. As we urged five years ago, we continue now to urge Marion to expand our investment in mental health liaisons and training to the department and other city staff. There is a critical, this is, there is a critical advancement in how to change, change and challenge, serve and protect as it is carried out and glad to hear of daytime response and evening follow-up. As you review your data on calls for service and as you review research being conducted in other communities, we urge you to discuss how twenty-four-hour access continues to be a need and appreciate that the number will be now on various vehicles as well. Being, being able to ensure that support for our community and police officers continues. We expect that expanding or promoting these services is what is best for our community. Reflecting on the last five years, we see both movement and moments of deep frustration. Some promises have been kept and others remain only words on paper. We see systems evolving and some resisting change. This is the tension we live in, but it's also the space where real, meaningful transformation can take root. You have a community deeply committed to helping you to uphold your expressed commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion and belonging. And yes, those are all components of mental well-being. Now more than ever, we need you to carry those on, carry on those convictions. In closing, that's why we show up. That's why I show up to city council, to school boards, to civil rights commission, community celebrations, community events and continue to volunteer my time with the Marion Alliance for Racial Equity. I keep showing up because I believe in this community, because I believe our mental wellness is also in the connections that we develop with each other, with leadership and with our neighbors. I believe in engaging with our city departments and elected representatives, not because I think the work is easy or that once you hear different perspectives, it will open your mind or heart, but because it is necessary. If I didn't have hope, I wouldn't be here. None of us would. Hope is not blind optimism, it's the decision to stay present and engaged. To keep speaking the truth and sometimes it may not feel like your truth. But we all have different experiences and that needs to be respected. To voice the good, the bad and the urgent need for continued change, I hope that in supporting mental health and community well-being, this council, city staff, community members continue to honor and see that every voice and experience, perspective shared makes a difference and makes each of our communities better. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to address council, please come forward. Any topic that is on the agenda but not part of a public hearing?
Hello, I am Iris Strong and I am also a Marion resident. I'm also a former staff of the Landmark Community District. I'm part of the Marion Alliance for Racial Equity and I wanted to thank the city council, the council, councilperson Jay Gage, Lynn County Mental Health Access Center, Foundation Two for their information provided at the proclamation on, for proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month. Supporting our neighbors and each other in mental well-being and community well-being is important to make our community, to our community and more welcoming for those that work to maintain their mental illness wellness every day. And I keep saying mental illness because, I mean, I'm going to take a brief pause there because I too struggle in that area. And so I wanted to say that this is a very important matter to me and, and I am thankful to be able to be on the other side right now because that is a part of who I am. And it's not all of who I am, but it's a part of who I am. And so having these, these resources available for us is necessary, necessary so that you can see both sides. You may see a negative side of me when I struggle, but there's also another side of me when I'm on the good. And I'm on the good because of services like this, the resources that we have. And so I want to make sure that, that I state that because the mental wellness of every day is important. It's important. I was involved in planning and coordinating the Love Conquers Hate Meeting meetup earlier this year in May to, to me also taking care of ourselves and each other and how we engage with each other and our practices and our policies in our city. The Love Conquers Hate meetup hosted by Marion Alliance for Racial Equity and the NAACP brought people together, brought residents across generations and backgrounds in a peaceful and empowerment event focused on our common humanity, community diversity and commitment to belonging. I was overjoyed that one of the speakers was my daughter, who also has gone through some similar things of me. And she had a spoken word and, and those words are important. And I want to just read a piece of what she said. Words specifically speak about caring about our own and each other's mental well-being. They say, "Love thy neighbor as thyself." But how can I love someone, someone, something I don't have for myself? My self-esteem is declining while that thing, while that thing called mental health is climbing. And this is what I offer to anyone in my surroundings. Words of hostility, actions of animosity, continuously breaks down, continually break down my soul, causing mental damage, lacking emotional control. But when I realize love is a never-ending treasure, a trove of truth, is when I begin to speak life, giving phrases to myself, about myself, for myself, showing compassion for shortcomings, accepting my flaws and all, a series of reasons to live and exist. It takes control of my emotions, overflowing with love, causes me to glow and affecting those around me with those same contagious feelings. Love can't conquer hate for all. If one can have love for their self, then one can have love for someone else. Thank you for giving me time and resources in the past, present and hopefully in the future to focus on mental wellness and continuing to care for one another. Reminded us of resources available in our city, community and county because I am a witness of how it helps. I can now speak publicly. It took a long time for me to get back to this place, but I'm here. And again, it's because of these resources. And I'm thankful and I'm hopeful that as you all listen to me on this side now, thank you, that you see the results of having these resources. So as we continue, thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for listening and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else to address council on any topic that is on the agenda but not part of a public hearing? Okay, seeing no one is coming forward, we'll close this part of the meeting and proceed to the next part of the agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. A one to E three, resolutions three-two-three-nine-zero through three-two-four-zero-three.
I moved and seconded to approve, or if we didn't have a second. And both in seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, including resolutions A one or items A one through E three, resolutions three-two-three-nine-zero through three-two-four-zero-three. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. For the next part of the agenda, I'll turn over the meeting to the mayor pro tem.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abou Asli's abstention as follows. Items D one through E one, resolution three-two-four-zero-four to three-two-four-zero-five.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with the mayor's abstention. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The, the motion is approved with the mayor's abstention. I'll pass it back to the mayor for the regular agenda.
Our next item is a public hearing on the proposed adoption of a fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget amendment. We have a presentation from Leanne.
You do. Thank you, your honor. By state law, municipal budgets are organized into functions and a city cannot go over budget in any particular function. Just displaying for the public, as of the end of the third quarter of the fiscal year, our expenditures are well under that seventy-five percent threshold. And our amendment as proposed includes a decrease in overall governmental activities expenditures of three-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. When you add in the transfers in, that does amount to about two-point-seven million dollars. Our revenue amendment includes ten-point-five million dollars approximately. And the biggest one on this, and you'll see in more detail later, is because of the bond proceeds for a refinance and a economic development grant. So just providing for the public the detail, this is for public safety, so police and fire. Carryovers or items that would have been purchased in the previous year, for whatever reason, got delayed and were purchased during the current year. General government, the biggest increase here, of course, on the revenue side is interest revenue as interest rates remained higher than was anticipated. Culture and recreation, so this is going to be parks and library and most of this is just equipment. Debt service, this is the true up because we make an estimate at the time we do budget and this is where payments ended up. And then capital projects with the biggest removal here being the Albernet Road Extension Project as there were delays with it being federally funded. And then here's the list of transfers of which the three million dollars was part of the budget work session discussion. So here's the overall summary. And I'll turn it over back to the mayor.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, stay close here in case we have questions. The public hearing is open. If anyone is here to address council, either in favor or in opposition to this measure, please come forward. Okay, we'll ask the staff if we received comments outside the meeting.
I have not received any.
I have not.
Okay, note that for the record and we will close the public hearing and move on to the resolution.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three-two-four-zero-six approving fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five budget amendment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three-two-four-zero-six approving the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget amendment. Any discussion or questions for Leanne? Okay, thank you. We will vote. All those in favor of approving resolution number three-two-four-zero-six, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash one-three, amending chapter two-
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance Number 25-13, amending Chapter 238, Article 1 of the Code of Ordinances related to park rules and metal detecting. This will be final consideration.
Second. It's been moved in seconded to approve ordinance Number 25-13, amending Chapter 238, Article 1 of the Code of Ordinances relating to park rules and metal detection. This is the final consideration. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the final approval of ordinance Number 25-13, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 32407, approving a waiver of ordinance Number 19-20 related to the required installation of a landscape buffer in the rear yards of 4193 and 4209. Justified Drive Marion, Iowa. This is brought by PRK Williams Building Group, Brian Morrell.
Second. It's been moved in seconded to approve Resolution Number 32407, approving a waiver of ordinance 19-20 related to the required installation of a landscape buffer in the rear yards of 4193 and 4209. Justified Drive. Discussion? Any discussion? Okay.
Nothing more than what we discussed on Tuesday, I think.
Right, there was quite a bit of discussion on Tuesday. Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor of Resolution 32407, please say aye.
Aye.
One aye. All those opposed, please say no.
No.
No. Okay, the noes have it and the motion is not approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance Number 25-14, approving a request to zone property from Undesignated to RR1 Rural Residential for properties located at 5,000 and 5,004 North 10th Street, Marion, Iowa, in the city of Marion. And this is our second consideration.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance Number 21, 25-14, approving the request to zone property from Undesignated to Rural Residential for 5,000 and 5,004 North 10th Street. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving ordinance Number 25-14, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. Next item is a public hearing on the amendment to Chapter 340 of the Code of Ordinances relating to zoning definitions, district uses in bulk regulations, development regulations and specific use standards. We have Charlie here, our consultant for our presentation before we take public comments.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, counsel. Charlie Cowell, RDG Planning and Design. Today, we are going over in a more consolidated version what we talked about on Tuesday, kind of highlight some of the discussion from Tuesday, as well as go through each section by section, so it is organized a little differently than, than you saw on Tuesday, just so we can go from top to bottom and kind of one by one and then move on to the next after we've discussed each item, so. So, starting with the definition sections, again, as a reminder for, for anyone listening online or from Tuesday, this, these code updates are related to implementing or, or moving forward with the vision of the conference plan that was recently adopted, as well as other design standard items related to the moratorium. So Article 2 definitions, there's a, you see those changes here related to this. This is mostly related to making sure we have terms defined that we can appropriately regulate. So that is adding a definition or tweaking the definition for artists' work-livespace. Grocery stores particularly, adding a medium category so we can allow kind of a mid-level grocery store in, in different areas. And then the same with, same situation with retail sales with large, medium, small designation to be able to regulate them differently. Three new terms were added, one deep discount store, which was a temporary definition with the moratorium. We've, we've specified or got more specific on that definition in this update. Liquor, smoke and vape stores as well, established a definition for that, want to circle back to that as well. Grocery medium as well, define that, it wasn't currently previously a, a use, so we define that as a size of medium grocery store. So on Tuesday, we did discuss the liquor, smoke and vape store definition and how specific we should be on that. Currently, the way this is proposed is it would, it, it would be broad in the sense of saying a retail establishment primarily engaged in the sale of alcohol beverages, so on and so forth. And we talked on Tuesday if that needs to be more specific on how that's defined. Square footage or, or a percentage of the floor space. So I'll stop here and, and that would have to be an amendment made to that if, because the way it's written right now is, is primarily engaged in. And I understand there was, you got some information up before the meeting.
Yeah.
For that.
Go ahead.
I would, thank you, Mayor. I would just say for the public hearing, for the purpose of the public hearing, to just go through the presentation and then when we get to the actual agenda items, Kara, our, our city attorney, will walk through the different procedural things that are required of council.
Yep, I think just proceed with your presentation to the end and then we'll take each item under the resolutions.
Okay. So moving on, Article 5, District Use in Bulk Regulations. Starting from the business districts, the local business, community business and regional business districts. This first table shows a, a couple minor cha- changes here. Note the footnotes added to the use tables, which specify different regulations for depending on the distance from Tower Terrace Road, our Highway 151, 10th Ave, Marion Boulevard corridor, and also Highway 13, Highway 100 corridor. So, for example, where you see car wash with the footnote or with the superscript 1 would indicate that's car wash is our conditional use in the community business district. But within 600 feet of Tower Terrace Road, they would not be a permitted use. They would be conditional everywhere else in the condition, in the community business district. Dwelling multifamily was also added as a conditional use, currently not allowed in any business districts except upper story units. This was added as a conditional use if placed behind the commercial, so the commercial continues to face the corridor. And that aligns with the input of the comprehensive plan for more mixed-use flexibility. Continuing in the business districts, you see a number of items here with the one, number one footnote or superscript designating these uses wouldn't be permitted within that 600-foot buffer area of Tower Terrace Road, which includes hotels, liquor, vape shops, motor vehicle services and sales, big retail stores and then big self-storage interior access units. So that was the business districts. Moving on to the office and light manufacturing districts, a few changes here related to our, the review of the moratorium uses. The dwelling multifamily, same situation, just, it was permitted in the office district, but did make it conditional for that extra set of review for, to make sure it's placed in the rear instead of fronting the, the frontage. And then the only other change here is the motor vehicle storage, permanent motor vehicle storage not being allowed on our, our primary corridor frontages in all, all three of the major corridors. Lastly, the, with the uses is our central corridor districts, which is a pretty extensive list table today. A couple items were made it, related to the moratorium. We added the deep discount store use with that. So we needed to add a, a row in here to indicate if that's allowed or not. And in the central district, central corridor districts, that would not be permitted as proposed. Same with liquor, tobacco and vape stores in here. Currently, that's permitted as a retail use. So those were the summary of the uses. Some of those, we added some specific use standards too, which we'll talk about here in a few slides. Article 8 relates to development regulations, so this is things all the way from setbacks and bulk height regulations to architecture, parking and landscaping. We're, we'll start with the architectural design standards. Starting at the top on where these architectural design standards apply. These relate to the type of building materials, the design of the facades and that sort of thing. Currently, it applies to several different areas. We made, this proposal makes an edit to apply that to more areas of the city. And that would include manufacturing districts and non-occupiable structures within the public institutional recreational districts. So that is a, a much larger area than, than today for applying these standards. It's something that came up a lot in our conversations during the conference plan and also in our previous presentations with you. So Plan and Zoning Commission did recommend approval as proposed, but they did note the considerations on potential increases in cost for development and, and having the design standards apply more broadly to manufacturing and, and certain other districts. But they did vote in, in favor of it. The other primary change to the architectural design standard section is requiring architectural features. Today, you require certain high-quality materials in, in the buildings. None of that's changed. But you don't really have anything that would regulate or add definitions, so it could be a blank wall of just a primary material. So this adds a handful of features that could be used to kind of break up large expanses of break, of blank walls. Most of these added proposed were taken from other master plans you have, such as the neighborhood at Indian Creek or the Enterprise Center standards as well. So not new standards on the surface, just new on where they're, where they're applied. And then lastly, approval and review procedures for any project that is in the capital improvements plan for a city facility. Today, the Planning and Zoning Committee Commission is kind of the final say on our, on these architectural design standards. If that project, if it is a project that's in the capital improvements plan for a city facility, then they would make a recommendation to you and city council would make the final decision on those types of projects. Parking and loading were pretty good. We didn't have to, we didn't touch much with that. A lot of the parking and loading section aligned with, with our vision and the comprehensive plan vision of the community. Just one small clarification, when we're screening parking facilities, we don't want fences or walls to be the only form. We want to add some softening, so we added a landscape requirement as well to that screening requirement. Which leads into landscaping section. Again, similar here, a lot of good screening and buffering stuff are used today and in the code, but some edits here to ensure that we're preserving existing trees that are present. So adding in a credit if development is preserving an existing healthy, mature tree, they can take down their landscaping requirements at an elevated scale when doing that. Not requiring the preservation of the tree, but it, it, they get credit for doing so. We also, along that same line, ensuring the health of trees at planting to decrease some of the initial planting requirements to ensure the, the health of the plants can thrive going forward. That includes reducing the size of the caliper of trees and the space required. So having enough space in the parking lot landscape area for the roots and plant to, to grow. One edit here that, that will get read is amending, adding another section or amendment to the landscaping screening section to a, a trigger for require, for when landscaping is going to be required. Right now, it's under a certain scale of development or redevelopment where it would trigger landscaper requirements and this would trigger that requirement anytime that there's a building permit pulled for the project, for a project in a area where landscaping applies. The last major section here, section Article 9, is specific use standards. So we've went over types of uses that are allowed on the surface. And this gets into more detail if there's certain uses that are allowed, but we need to maybe think about the design of certain situations. That's where the specific use standards come in. Number one here is artists' work-livespace. This was an item that was in the moratorium list. We did present some ideas for how that, how those spaces should be designed with the residential portion being in the rear or above, so that the front of the street is maintained as kind of a more active commercial space. Discuss that with the Chamber at an Open House and other representatives and, and they're in agreement in, in how this was worded. So there's a handful of bullet points on how to properly do this type of use. Gas stations was an item we've obviously had a lot of discussion about. Just as a reminder from our Tues- Tuesday's presentation, I'm going to come back to this, but just kind of talk about this quickly right now. We were tasked with continuing to look at the distance requirement versus the arterial road requirement. This is just pertaining to Tower Terrace Road. Pretty much the next four slides are all just thinking about Tower Terrace Road, so keep that in the back of your head. Limiting the, the number of pumping stations, we had originally add a lower number than 16. We were, discussion with you all previously was bumping that up. We had six, went to 16. And then P and Z's recommendation was to go up to 24 as the maximum. We did add in an exception for Highway 13 since, since Tuesday as well regarding the location. Buffering between uses and residential properties, we were charged with looking at that. And then the existing standards for all other locations were generally acceptable. So just a reminder, this is what's on the books today, so anytime someone comes in and proposes a gas station outside the moratorium area, but they would be required to do a number of things. They would have to meet certain requirements for the accessory use with the gas station, if it's a restaurant or a retail use. Today, fuel pumps can't be any closer than 20 feet to any lot line on any side. So that's, that's a standard today. Regarding the pump cam, canopies, they, they have to be located behind the building. So they can't be visible from the street or public space, or if they are in a situation like on a corner lot, they have to be placed appropriately so they're not visible or next to Sixth Avenue, Tower Terrace Road, public parks, schools, open space. So we've got quite a few protections in, in the code today that would kind of scale down the, the, the feeling of a gas station, especially next to residential areas. Which here is another couple standards that are pertaining to gas stations citywide. They do have to be buffered from residential uses by a 10-foot planting strip landscaped to be at least 30-inch tall at maturity. A decorative fence can also be used with fewer, fewer plantings and then lighting has to be shielded away and downward. And outdoor storage as well, shielded and screened. So, moving back to Tower Terrace Road with those existing standards in mind that are in place today, we, we, during this process, proposed a few additional items to address some of the concerns regarding gas stations in that area and be able to allow them, because we did here as well. We, we want to see gas, we want a gas station up in that area. So as proposed, is a limit proposed of one gas station per mile on the, the Tower Terrace Road corridor with a maximum of 16 pumping stations per state per gas station, so serving 16 vehicles max. And then require a, a separate structure to convenience store to sell, that's a, could sell. And then require a separate structure to convenience store to sell, that's a, could sell food, beverages, retail items. So it's not just a standalone pumping area without a, another component to it. The Plan Zoning Commission recommended amending it to a twenty-four maximum pump station. And then we talked on Tuesday about that we were comfortable with sixteen. So just as a recap of our discussions over the past month and a half or so, we did initially look at doing the separation requirement based on the street classification. So only allowing the stations on Tower Terrace Road when they're at an arterial street intersection. That was be about five locations along the corridor. We got feedback from you and, and at the open houses as well that, that maybe a distance requirement was a better approach to allow more flexibility in, in where the first station might go for land that maybe is not available and so on and so forth. So that, we did end up then proposing the distance, one-mile distance requirement. We also looked at initially the location of the pump canopies on Tower Terrace Road. Whether that is in front of the building, which would actually be against what you currently regulate today or behind the building, which on the Tower Terrace Road corridor would be next to residential uses most of the time. The vision from the comp plan and what we heard was the, the entryway corridors are very important to people coming into town. So maintaining kind of that street presence with high-quality buildings and spaces and keeping kind of the, the canopy or other facilities to the rear, whether that's well, car washes wouldn't be allowed on Tower Terrace Road, but storage spaces and, and things like that. So therefore it is kept, we did keep the recommendation to have the pump stations be located in the rear. But there is that buffering requirement, the landscaping, ten-foot landscaping requirement still there. Parking lot landscaping and buffering still required as it is today as well. So that would kind of take care of a lot of those, those effects that car, car traffic could have next residential uses. Last item related to specific use standards. Liquor, smoke and vape stores, similar to gas stations. We, this is proposed as having a separation requirement for new liquor, smoke and vape stores in Marion. So this would be citywide. We've moved on from Tower Terrace Road now. Citywide proposed that they be one mile from another new store. So existing stores would be allowed to remain as they are. If they were to cease to operate for a period of a hundred and eighty days, then this one mile trigger would, would trigger for any new station, our new liquor store. Same with pawn shops, except the distance is a thousand feet instead of a mile in that situation. So the, the base use standards, use district standards would still apply. So you know, liquor store wouldn't be permitted in a local business district anyway. So it's taken care of, but if it were in other districts like regional business, this would, this would try, this would apply. And this map was illustrating those locations today of where, what that one-mile buffer looks like for that use. Few other items here we talked about a little bit already, so I won't, I won't dwell on it too much. Car washes, pretty good standards today. Just made a clarification that other facilities associated with the car wash also have to be screened or behind the building from the corridors. Same with drive-through facilities, the drive-through portion does have to be proposing that be located behind or on the side for our Tower Terrace Road and Central Corridor districts. And then we talked about the, the dwelling, multi-unit dwelling situation as well. And that would be conditional located behind commercial use. So that was a quick summary of our more lengthy discussion on Tuesday. So happy to answer any questions before you move into public hearing.
We'll take the public hearing and then if we have questions, we'll take them during each of the ordinance motions. Okay? So the public hearing is now open. If anyone is here to address council either in favor or in opposition to these measures, please come forward at this time. Okay, we'll ask staff if we received comments outside the meeting.
I have not received any.
Nicole?
I have not had any comments either.
Okay, let's note that for the record. We'll close the public hearing. And then we'll proceed to the motions on the ordinance.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash fifteen, approving an amendment to chapter three forty of the Marion Code of Ordinances relating to zoning definitions, and this is the initial consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash fifteen, approving an amendment to chapter three forty of the Code of Ordinances related to zoning definitions. Discussion, and we may have a, some input from our city attorney.
Yes, Your Honor, as you heard in Charlie's presentation, staff made note of the different discussion points that were brought up on Tuesday's discussion, and we have some proposed amendments that may cover some of those discussions that, that came up. The first one for item E four in relation to the definition of liquor stores. Staff took a look at how we have defined different alcohol establishments in other places in our code. So we are proposing an amendment to this ordinance as follows. We recommend a motion to amend ordinance twenty-five dash fifteen to add clarification that primarily engaged shall mean any retail establishment for which the sale of alcoholic beverages, tobacco products, smoking accessories, vaping devices and related merchandise constitutes more than fifty percent of its annual gross sales.
Okay, thank you for that. If anyone's so inclined to make that motion for the amendment to what's on the agenda, feel free to do so, otherwise we would take discussions. Yes, go ahead.
I'd like, you want me to read, read the whole amendment or take it as she just proposed?
You can simply say so moved.
So moved, according to what Cara just spoke.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to amend ordinance number twenty-five dash fifteen to add clarifications regarding the meaning of primarily engaged. So that it constitutes more than fifty percent of the annual gross sales of the, of the listed items, alcoholic beverages, tobacco products, smoking accessories, vaping devices and related merchandise. Okay, now discussion on the amendment. Anyone have any discussion on the amendment? Or questions for Charlie on, specific to the amendment? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor of amending the motion as stated, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. So now we have an amended motion for approval of ordinance number twenty-five dash fifteen, including what was stated by the city attorney. Any discussion on the amended motion? Questions for Charlie? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor of the amended motion to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash fifteen, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash sixteen, approving an amendment to chapter three forty of the Marion Code of Ordinances related to district uses and bulk regulations. Initial consideration.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash sixteen, approving the amendment to chapter three forty of the Code of Ordinances related to district uses and bulk regulations. Discussion. We have another, some input from the city attorney.
Thank you, Your Honor. With regard to item E five, on Tuesday, council discussed the option of referring this matter back to planning and zoning with regard to gas stations as a permitted use on Tower Terrace. And staff would recommend if you are so inclined, we do have an amendment proposal for this one as well. And just as a note, if we do amend this ordinance, then at the final reading of this ordinance, we would also bring forward a resolution that would extend the moratorium as to the, this particular use only. And so our recommended amendment would be that council makes a motion to amend ordinance twenty-five sixteen to remove gas stations as a permitted use on Tower Terrace and to refer this matter back to Planning and Zoning Commission for further review and recommendations.
Okay. So now we'll take discussion, or if anyone's inclined to make the motion, they're welcome to.
I just have a quick question, probably a silly procedural question. But so with ordinances, we have to prove these three times. So are these amendments automatically included in that second and third reading?
Yes, we're actually able to do these amendments today because it's the first reading. So then they would appear in the second and third readings as well.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
Good question. Any discussion? Anyone inclined to make the motion?
I, I move to approve the, to accept the motion as, as read by Cara.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to amend the motion to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash sixteen by removing gas stations, gas stations as a permitted use on Tower Terrace and, and referring the matter back to Planning and Zoning Commission for further review and recommendation. Okay, discussion or questions for Charlie on the amendment? Yes, sir.
I don't know if it comes under this amendment. It seems to be in this right arena. So we did have discussion about changing the number of pumps from twenty-four to sixteen. That is now seems to be included in there, but we did not make a change that I saw in changing the canopy width back to one hundred. So is that something that they will automatically include as part of their additional work?
It actually was never changed. As proposed, it was sixteen and a hundred. And the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation was to be twenty-four and one-twenty. So I don't believe you actually have to recommend any changes, I believe.
It, it was never adopted. That, that, there was a recommendation that was never adopted.
Those, those preferences of councils will be communicated to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were covering that in the, in the right manner.
Gate, you have a question?
Yeah, I have another question about this one specifically. So when this goes back to planning and zoning, can it not go back to planning and zoning until after we do these ordinances or will that happen concurrently? Like what's the timeline for them to get this back and then just, just because we brought up the moratorium extending for gas stations? I just don't want that to be forever.
We, we can refer that back right now. We don't have to wait.
If I can just add, sorry, add a little bit more context to that. We just don't know how long it will take them. And so we just want to make sure that we've got, we've got all the, the proper procedures in place in the event that it does take a little bit longer. So at least we're being transparent with the community, with what, what we're doing.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, now we're still on the amendment. So you have, Sarah, you have?
This can probably go under either one.
All right, so any further discussion on whether or not to amend? Questions for Charlie on the amendment? Or, or Cara? Okay, then we'll vote on the amendment. All those in favor of amending the motion to accept, to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash sixteen by removing gas stations as a permitted use on Tower Terrace and referring that matter back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for further review and recommendations. Please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Okay, the motion is now approved as, as stated. Now we can take discussion or questions for Charlie on the amended motion. Sarah?
I was just on the, I guess it's on the gas stations, but can we get some different, can we get clarification before this maybe goes planning zone or it comes back, it comes back to us? Like exactly how many properties under this proposal? There's five, but I mean, we, we, we have the planned use. We don't know if there's going to be one in there. That could go in there. That doesn't count toward the one-mile restriction. I don't know. I just, I don't know. I'm still not convinced that this one-mile discussion is a good one.
Yeah, I mean, it depends. A few things depend, but there could be a maximum of, just based on the length of the corridor. Hypothetically, three or four, depending if they, how they end up with the free properties that are available and available to be zoned for business use. So it likely would be three max with that separation requirement. But don't, that's hypothetical depending on where, how it, the first one goes in.
So when we're looking at a proliferation of gas stations, once this would come to be, it's, it's not, it can't really happen. And some of it's not going to happen until Tower Terrace Road goes through anyway.
Right, well. Intel properties over there get rezoned unless, except for the neighborhood at Indian Creek area, which is a P U D, which is exempt from it's got its own regulations.
Okay, and I still come back to can in, in the future or at some point do, can gas stations be zone, can they be their own entity? Do they always have to fall? And I know we make that up, but we have them under business commercial. Is there a benefit or not a benefit to having them as their own use, zoning use?
I mean, it's, I've never seen anything like that before where there's a category and there's only one use in it. I shouldn't say that. I have seen that before. Field of Dreams is in its own zoning category, Dyer'sville. But it's, I, I honestly don't quite know how the legal ramifications of doing that. But I've never seen something like that be done before.
Okay, and then my next, I guess my final question on this is if, let's say it, it, it goes, it, somebody that it's, it's approved use. So we have all the extra pieces, that's called planning and zoning, whatever it is, in a neighborhood that's near it. Doesn't, it's like finds out and they're not happy understandably, and they want to push back against that. That's possible under the setting, right? If, if, if this is going up against the neighborhood.
It would be a conditional use, so it would still have to go through those, those approval processes with the Board of Adjustment. So, so just like today, a gas station would have to go through those same procedures. If it happens to be in the Tower Terrace Road area, then it would have those handful of bullet points with additional standards for that.
Thank you.
Right, to, really quick, jumping off of Councilwoman Menzur's question, Charlie. Can you explain, so the conditional use does not end with the city council, it goes through planning and zoning and Board of Adjustments. Can you explain the why behind that?
Yeah, I can. Not going to be a lawyer here, but I'll, I'll use lawyer terms. It's a qua, it turns into a quasi judicial process because it's conditional in nature. So therefore there's a handful of things in the code that have to be looked at. Whether it's income in, in the spirit of the vision of the, the community plan does not adversely affect the health, safety, general welfare. There's a, I think, five or six pride bullet points. So there's, it's an extra level of scrutiny that has to go through with the Board of Adjustment versus city council. So that their, their decision is based on a finding of facts and decision.
And, and that is based on state law.
Yeah, right.
So that, that's an important point. And then just one, one for Councilwoman Menzur. With respect to the mile, referring it back to planning and zoning, I think staff's, the staff's approach is going to be we're starting from scratch. And I mean, certainly the feedback that we got from council on Tuesday and here today, we're going to make sure that that's all shared with planning and zoning and our consultants as we go through and try to, try to incorporate the feedback that we learned.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Okay, we'll vote on the amended motion. All those in favor of approving ordinance number twenty-five dash sixteen as amended by, by the amendment made by Councilmember Jensen. Please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash seventeen, approving amendment to chapter three forty of the Marion Code of Ordinances related to architectural design standards, parking and loading regulations and landscaping and screening standards. and loading regulations, and landscaping and screening standards, initial consideration.
Second.
All those, oh, I'm sorry. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 25-17, approving the amendment of chapter 340 of the Code of Ordinances related to architectural design standards, parking and loading regulations, and landscaping and screening standards. Discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes, ma'am.
I do have a proposed amendment for this one as well.
Okay.
This proposal is not in response to the discussion on Tuesday, but this came from further review by staff. We are making a recommendation that would have the landscaping and screening standards kick in. As currently written, it would only kick in if there were renovations or expansions to buildings. This would apply to any sort of renovations or expansions, construction, and wouldn't necessarily be contingent upon it being a building only. So what we are recommending is that council make a motion to amend ordinance 2517 to provide that within the moratorium corridors, the landscaping and screening standards shall apply to developed lots when there is expansion, construction, or renovations that require a building permit.
So moved, right? Is that how you do it?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to amend ordinance number 25-17 to provide that within the moratorium corridors, the landscaping screening standards will apply to developed lots when there is expansion, construction, and renovation that requires a building permit. That's the proposed amendment. Now discussion on the amendment.
I have a question.
Yes.
When it says renovations that require a building permit, is that only exterior or is that also interior renovations?
That would include interior and exterior.
So if someone just redid a kitchen in a building, they would have to redo the entire landscaping on the exterior?
Correct. This is being looked at for those targeted corridors associated with the moratorium and trying to level up those existing buildings that, we have some provisions within our landscaping code that would kick in landscaping, but there is a threshold for when that gets kicked in. So if they're just doing interior renovations or some minor changes, landscaping might not exist on the site as it sits today. So it's just to kind of help level all those properties up.
Yes, sir.
So, so clarify what you're saying there because if, if I've got a piece of property worth a million dollars and I'm going to do a $10,000 renovation and I, obviously I get a permit for that, doing it the right way, is that going to kick it in? I mean, so is, does there need to be some percentage threshold here? You talked about a threshold, but I typically when we have that as some kind of a, a percentage for renovation based on the value of the original property?
Yes, currently in our code, we have a, an assessed valuation of at least 50% for when it's needing to be kicked in for renovations. So you are correct, Steve, that if you had a $1 million property doing $10,000 of renovations, it would kick in the landscaping requirement based off of the pulling of the permit. Today's standard is 50% of the value to
Okay.
assessed valuation, though.
Yeah, that, okay, so that's very significant. Okay.
Correct.
Any further discussion? Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah. So going back to Will's hypothetical example, an interior renovation or remodel of some type that has no bearing or direct connection to the exterior aesthetics of the building or the property. I'm trying to figure out, unless it is so major, maybe meeting a, a dollar threshold, but if it's, if it's relatively minor, I'm trying to understand the logical connection and catalyst that an interior non-visible renovation has any bearing on what's in, on the exterior.
So, sorry, it's really about the appearance of, so we have these new standards in, that, that are, we've gone through, we've comp plan, set the vision, and now we're putting the tools in the toolbox to effectuate that vision. Not all of the, the facilities in these major corridors are now up to those standards. So what is the, what is the triggering moment for us to be able to get them to reach higher? Under the existing code, or as it's written, as Nicole just said, it would have to be 50% or more of the valuation improvements, leading to 50% or more of the assessed value. That's a significant amount before we can get them to elevate the, the appearance and meet the intent of the code. We, the, the council heard an example during the moratorium process where somebody was looking to acquire some property. They acquired that property in this corridor. Based on what we knew at that time, there would be no architectural trigger to elevate those standards. They could just simply go in, make the modifications, but the, the vision that's being articulated by the, the comprehensive master plan and the zoning code would not kick in. So having the requirement to meet at least the landscaping, not necessarily the architecture, but at least landscaping, it's an opportunity for us to have those conversations so that they can elevate the appearance of that property within these key corridors that the council identified.
So I'm, I'm still, I want to just, maybe, maybe the example is wrong, but if it's a, if it is a, a property, a business, they have a break room and kitchen and they want to upgrade the kitchen. The, the value of that may be less than, than the exterior landscaping modifications. And, and I, so I, what I'm just trying to understand is, is, is again, if a relatively minor interior renovation, how that logically can trigger something that might be very costly on the exterior? That's, that's my only question. And I, I, I'm sorry, I'm just not there making, making A connect B.
No, and, and this one doesn't necessarily connect A, connect B with the value internal to the external. It's more about if somebody's coming in to do some work and they're in that corridor, they're coming in and seeking something and now we have these standards. If this is, this is a recommendation to help elevate the exterior appearance of it. If this, if, if council wishes to remove that, any sort of interior and just leave it to the exterior, we can certainly amend that. But the, the intent behind this is to, if there's going to be work being done on these key corridors that don't have any landscaping, and we've heard throughout this process, we need to make our, our corridors more visually appealing and reach, you know, elevate that, that curb appeal and those aesthetics, that this would be a mechanism to do that, to, to bring, start introducing these elevated standards or level up those existing properties. Because as it, as it's written now, this would be for new development.
So I, I
Or, or above 50%.
I, I appreciate the, the objective that we're going for. I don't want to have any fuzziness around. I think that's appropriate. I am just trying to think of for interior activity, what is the matrix of that interior activity that ends up being the logical trigger to do what we want outside? And it seems to me there are some pretty small inconsequential things that have no connection to the outside. But then if you, if there is a major internal rev, uh, reno, a storage building that all of a sudden is going to have a mechanic's base built into it, that seems pretty significant. I, so, so I, I welcome my colleagues to try to help me understand this a little bit better, but I
Okay, so I'd like to hear from other people if there's, if there's similar thoughts or different thoughts or whatever. Go ahead, Steve.
So the reason I was asking that question, is there a percentage limit? It is, I, I'm kind of somewhat in sync with Grant, but not as much. In other words, you can make, if, if I have a business and I'm making an interior renovation. So when I was a vector, it was pretty easy to make interior renovations that could cost half a million dollars or more. In other words, we were putting in, we were upgrading the laboratory. Yeah, that could be a couple million dollars worth. So it had nothing to do with what was on the outside. But in my opinion, if a business is willing to put a significant, to incur a significant renovation on the interior, then they should be more than willing to invest in a landscaping option. Now, I think there needs to be some limits. If I'm only putting in a $10,000 kitchen change, I'm not sure I should be incurring the landscaping expense. So now 50% I think is really too high in this situation. I agree with that. But maybe that percentage to trigger this needs to have some percentage associated with it. I don't know what that should be, whether it's 10% of the value or whatever, but lowering that threshold, but yet not triggering it because of somebody just redoing their bathrooms or the kitchen, I don't believe that's enough to, a business should trigger it. But if they're making a significant investment, then they should not have any concern about triggering a landscaping investment.
And I appreciate that.
Yeah. Go ahead, Sarah.
How much is a financial investment on landscape? If somebody was going from zero to meeting the landscaping regulations that we have in place right now? Is it trees? How much does a couple trees cost? Is this, how much does, what, I mean, I'd say at an average, I mean, I know this is a total ballpark, but I mean, are we
Yeah.
Tens of thousands? Are we talking the price of a couple tree?
Yeah, I'm not going to attempt to put a landscaping hat on, but I do know trees are expensive and especially if you have to break up concrete and put in dirt and stuff, it, it could be significant, but I don't, I don't want to speculate.
So that's where we get into, we have, because the regulations are trees, you'd have to, you have to have some green space to plant them in. You're putting in a
Probably the biggest sit, the biggest situation is if you have a parking lot that's just blank concrete, you would have to put perimeter landscaping around that, potentially some interior landscaping depending on the size. For your next residential, you'd have to put a buffer yard in.
Okay, because what I'm thinking about is there's, I, in my mind, I'm going from the difference of a small local business who's in a shop about like this with a semi storefront or what would be in front of that, that wants to upgrade something and suddenly they're getting tasked with this massive landscaping project that might be larger than the actual renovation going on inside. That's kind of, that's where I kind of like, but I, but I get it. I mean, I, I, I didn't want to question when we were redoing some things up here on the, the corridor about the color of the brick or what was going on on the outside and whether this was making the standards in the sidewalks. And I was like, well, they're grandfathered, we can't, we have to let them. And I was like, oh, that doesn't, that, that doesn't sit well. But I, I honestly, I have an easier time if it is a larger company and you have to add some landscaping and pieces to that. I feel like that's easier than asking a local person who's trying to maintain and trying to keep things going. So I believe in the intent. I, I, I almost wish it was, it was, there was a way to try it without a risk of something going south that we regretted for some unintended consequence. But maybe you have, maybe you have researched this with others to know that this is a Yeah.
I almost wish this discussion would have happened on Tuesday. This is, this discussion and the, and the question, answer, kind of back and forth dialogue, it really belongs in a work session. Discussion in a, in a, I mean, I know I've mentioned this before and I'm, and I'm not, you know, it's just, just for, for, for our future, for the future. I mean, this is a very important discussion. I wish it would have happened on Tuesday. Discussion at, on a, on a, on a motion made should be between the council members trying to convince each other yes or no, or what the, what the pros and cons are. That's, that's what the discussion really should focus on at a formal meeting like this. And the question, answer, getting information, those kinds of things. I know we, we kind of are lax on that and we allow for, for that because we want to be making thoughtful decisions and I don't want to stand in the way of that. But really this, this, this level of discussion, I wish would happen more in the, in the work sessions. But at this point, we are, we are, we have the amendment in front of us. And I guess, you know, people can voice their opinion on whether or not to accept this amendment and then we can go from there. It doesn't mean that it can't be amended again in the future. This isn't, this isn't set in stone. I mean, you know, that's become, you know, we have, we have two more readings and even if it becomes adopted, you know, amend or, you know, it can be tweaked in the future. It can, it can be changed if, if there's a feeling in that way of her seeing that it's not working the way it should or whatever. Did you have something to add, Ryan?
Mayor, I, I, I think your words are right on point and that was something that staff was going to mention at the very end after we get to the last ordinance. And that is, as we talked about on Tuesday, the amount of work that the council and the community has done with the comp plan and the zoning code, these updates, is a significant Herculean task. There's a lot of details here and zoning is a case by case basis. And to go through every possible scenario and think through, it's virtually impossible. And there are going to be things that, as you just mentioned, we're going to learn once these rules are in place and we start getting petitions and evaluating them, we're going to start learning things that we will want to tweak and will want to amend and have those conversations with E and Z and council. Staff offered that amendment as we continue to look at this. Certainly we have architectural standard or landscaping standards in place. This was meant to, the intent was to capture those that, within those corridors that are already existing and not, the existing facility. So if council wishes, you can vote that, the amendment down. We'll still have regulations in place and we can continue to monitor and vet it and have those conversations as we go back and continue to work with PNZ on the gas stations. We're going to be looking at that six month timeframe that Councilman Jensen brought up. We can certainly lump in additional conversations about landscaping.
Okay. Any further discussion on the amendment to the motion? Okay, we'll vote on the amendment. All those in favor of amending 25, ordinance number 25-17? Please say aye. I'm an aye. All is opposed, say no.
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 Okay, the noes have it, the amendment is defeated. And then now we have the original motion as presented. Any discussion on the original motion as presented? Okay. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 25-17 as originally presented, they say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-18, approving an amendment to chapter 340 of the Marion Code and ordinances related to certain specific use standards. This is the initial consideration.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 25-18, approving amendment to chapter 340 of the Code of Ordinances related to certain specific use standards. Discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes, ma'am.
I do have a recommended amendment for this one as well.
Okay.
Based on the conversation surrounding gas stations on Tower Terrace Road, this one also has the special use standards, which involve the number of pumps, the canopy size, things of that nature. And so because we've already taken that as a permitted use off the table at this time, we would recommend also making an amendment to this one, that they are not permitted within 600 feet of the Tower Terrace Road right of way and referring this back to planning and zoning as well for determination on those specific use standards. And so we would recommend a motion to amend ordinance 2518 to provide that gas stations are not permitted within 600 feet of the Tower Terrace Road right of way and to refer this matter back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for further review and recommendations.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to amend the motion to approve ordinance number 25-18 by providing that gas stations are not permitted within 600 feet of the Tower Terrace Road right of way back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for further review and recommendations. Discussion? Discussion on the amendment. All those in favor of amending. Ordinance number twenty-five dash eighteen, but the proposed amendment is read, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. Now we have the amended motion. Any discussion on the amended motion to uh, to approve ordinance twenty-five dash eighteen? Hey, all those in favor of ordinance number twenty-five dash eighteen as amended. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. Next item is a public forum, which is a time set aside for comments from the members of the public on any topic. Whether or not on the agenda, if anyone's here to address council, please come forward. Seeing no one's coming forward, we'll close this part of the meeting and proceed to council comments. Well? Sarah?
I'm good.
Age.
I guess the only thing I would add from earlier tonight, and I meant to say this earlier, but maybe it's better because I don't wanna embarrass Erin and her team. But I think the work that they do at the Access Center, um, simply just amazing and essential. Um, I'm the current Marion representative on the Access Center board and the success stories that, that we hear at all those meetings. And the, the extra steps they take to connect folks to services and some of the really challenging situations and. Odds stacked against situations, you know, that team and their partners, Foundation Two, Abbey Center, Area Ambulance. They always come together and they, they figure it out, so just, I'm just really glad that Lynn County has this, this resource. And, and hopefully we'll see more resources like in the future.
Grant?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Steve?
Uh, well, it's, it's high school graduation weekend. So I think we'll have about a couple of thousand more graduates ready to enter the workforce. Or ready to get ready for college next year, so a lot of graduation parties going on in the next few weeks. And I hope they have a lot of fun at those parties and hope everybody has a safe, fun Memorial Weekend.
Sarah?
I do have something. Um, Tuesday, um, we had to move from this past week, so this coming Tuesday. Um, the twenty-seventh, we will do a free Zumba out at La Park at six o'clock. Adding that to the agenda before sunrise yoga kicks off and Down Dogs kick off in June yoga. Also, we are looking for volunteers. You can see we've been working in the garden out here by City Hall that um helps with the food pantry. And I know our couple of lead volunteers are looking for some other volunteers, so if anybody is ever interested in helping with reading. Helping when they start harvesting, um, it's pretty simple. It's like an hour a week. If you can help out, um. They can contact me through my city email. We would love to have some additional volunteers.
Okay, um, on the topic of graduations, uh. Last week, uh, I signed eight hundred and fifty. Cards that went into the graduation packets of every graduating senior. I don't wanna use a stamp, I, it's, I, I don't know, I just putting the effort into it. Um, so it seems worthwhile, but uh, anyway, so on behalf of all of us, on behalf of the, the city and, and all of Team Marion. Um, also speaking of graduations, today was the uh graduation uh ceremony for the Leadership in Action. Class, and we had three of our uh city teammates go through that class. Um, and uh, so I had the pleasure of uh speaking with them today. They've, that program has now graduated over two hundred uh community members who are. Building the pipeline of future leaders and um army of people who are supportive of Marion and, and, and it's. Uh, positive direction. Um, and uh, the Marion Arts Festival last Saturday. I always take the opportunity as the vendors are setting up, as the artists are setting up to go um. Down the line and just welcome them to Marion, and the amount of comments I heard from the returning artists, and most of them are returning. Whether from several years ago or now, but it's all, the most fun for the people who hadn't been here in several years. Um, to hear the comments about the transformation of Uptown, and uh. The comments were just so positive about, you know, just what we have, what we've done with the community. Um, just a lot of fun to talk to them, and they're from, you know, the entire region and uh. Uh, as far away as Kansas City and uh, I believe there was one, one from California. They were from all over. Um. Then the final thing is, uh, our, our uh fire station received yet one more award, one more recognition. Uh, not an award, but a recognition is now published in this book called New International Architecture. And there are two hundred and four projects from across the world featured in this book, thirty-nine from the US. And our fire station headquarters is one of them, so another reason to be proud. Uh, with that, we'll conclude the meeting. Thank you, have a great weekend.